Seven twenty-nine. Okay, let's go. All right, good evening, everyone. It's now seven thirty, and this is October the twenty-third, two thousand seventeen. This is Westminster City Council meeting. This time I would ask you to join us, please, in the Pledge of Allegiance, and there are flags in both the front and the back.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, if you would, please, take the roll.
Atchison.
Here.
Baker.
Here.
Byrd.
Here.
DeCambre.
Here.
Garcia.
Here.
Pinter.
Here.
Sights.
Here.
Next item on the agenda will be the considerations of the minutes of the meeting of October the ninth. We have a motion from a member of council, please. It's Sights.
Oh, actually. I move that the city approve the minutes of the October ninth to two thousand seventeen meeting as presented.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. All those in favor, please signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? You're known the motion is carried. Tonight, we have a couple of presentations. And I'm trying to get mine back up. Ms. Leo. There you are. Ms. Crissman. Ms. Martin. Do you guys come up front?
Mars is what?
Yeah, Mars is what? Stayed front.
All right.
Yeah, right there. So tonight, we're going to do a recognition of our city's staff. And led by this group, two thousand fourteen, the city of Westminster placed second in the state of Colorado for healthiest cities. This group wasn't satisfied with that. So in two thousand fifteen, we placed first. Still not being satisfied. They went back again in two thousand sixteen, and they placed first again. Now, that's comparing us to private industry as a municipal government. That's pretty hard to do. But for the leadership of these three and the staff that help support it, and our city employees, that's a pretty big accomplishment. But this group is never satisfied. So in two thousand seventeen, they were recognized as part of a group of one hundred cities nationwide as the healthiest wellness groups in the United States. So they have another challenge coming up here in the near future, that out of that top one hundred of all the cities that were looked at in the United States, the city of Westminster placed fifth out of the top one hundred. And as a lot of that is due to these three young ladies and leadership that they provided. And I'm going to have them tell you a little bit more about the award and how they were chosen, how they were so darned successful. Lisa?
So, first of all, it was a true honor to have been at the event and to have received this award, especially in light of the fact that we are a public sector employer, and we were competing against mostly big, huge, private sector companies with lots of money. So, the award, actually, there were over two thousand sub medals nationwide. The top one hundred were invited to this event, and as they started at a hundred and they worked their way down, and when they got to the top ten, I looked at Nikki and Dee and I said, holy cow, we're in the top ten in the nation.
That's not really what she said.
And then, to have received fifth place, it was absolutely a highlight. And it really speaks to the efforts, not just of HR, but of the dedication and commitment of our employees, that in the efforts that they've put towards health and well-being, because that was a component in the sub medal, some of the markers and the key things that we've accomplished as employees, so.
Nikki?
I'm just happy to be here after twenty years. So, it is, it's a significant privilege to be able to be honored, but also, after speaking with all the companies, to also know how much it means to have management support and the backing of people that believe in you and people that believe in your programs, and that allow you to grow each year. It's not usual to have programs like this last much longer than five years, and this one's been in place since nineteen eighty-five. And so, it really is truly a privilege and an honor to be part of it.
And Ms. Martin?
Well, I-
I know what you said.
They said it all.
You still get to talk.
But it truly, you know, one of the things that I think I didn't quite appreciate until I was in the midst of it, it doesn't mean that we're the healthiest people. What it means is that we have a culture of well-being and that we really care about the well-being of our employees and that our employees also, you know, care for themselves, their families, and that that's a real important part of our culture. And so, this is, as Lisa and Nikki said, this is, you know, against Davida and United Healthcare and Google and all of those companies, the Fortune five hundred. And so, the fact that we're fifth in the country in healthiest employers, I think the highest municipality was top fifty beyond us.
Yeah.
So, it really says a lot to the team and our employees.
Well, the inscription on the plaque that I'm holding has been shown around a lot. It's been shared with the employees. This is the two thousand seventeen Healthiest One Hundred Workplaces in America, city of Westminster. In recognition of exceptional achievement and leadership in building a healthy and productive workplace committed to employee and community health and well-being. Ladies, congratulations on behalf of the city of Westminster.
Thank you.
Nice job. Back to your office again.
Great picture.
I'll go. I'm trying to run away. That's all right.
Okay, one, two, three, smile. One, two, three, smile. Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Garcia, if you would.
If I could have Mr. Burke and his team come up to accept some more awards. Lots of people here. Okay. And I'm going to read a little bit about some recognition, then I'll, John, introduce everybody, kind of talk about the role in these projects. But we're celebrating today is that the Westminster Station Project was awarded the two thousand and seventeen Project of the Year by the American Public Works Association Colorado Chapter. And this prestigious award recognizes a project team for its innovation, cooperation, vision, and creating a regional amenity that includes a safe and attractive transit environment for patrons. That's not enough. There's more awards to go to this group. On the heels of this award, the Little Dry Creek Drainage and Flood Control Project at Westminster Station won the two thousand and seventeen Excellence in Engineering Award from the Colorado Association of Flood Plane Managers. This project realigned Little Dry Creek and created a two-point-three acre pond and lowered the flood plain by five feet in order to keep the commuter rail tracks above water during significant storms. You know, these projects were twelve years in the making, and they utilized talent from all city departments throughout the city of Westminster. And it's the hard work of the talented employees that are here. It's also the hard work of a lot of previous employees, too, that got us to this point. And it set the vision and set the groundwork that allowed us to have such a successful project. And in addition, this represents some strong public partnerships with other entities and organizations. I know we have some representatives here, you know, other organizations, including Adams County, Colorado Department of Transportation, the Regional Transportation District, Dr. Cog, Urban Drainage and Flood Control, Great Outdoors Colorado, Westminster Legacy Foundation, and the Crestview Wired Sanitation District. So this was, this is a group. This was teamwork that brought us together to get us to these awards. And the Westminster Station, Little Dry Creek Projects truly laid the groundwork for the future development and recreational amenities in this area. So, on behalf of council, on behalf of all of us, we just want to say congratulations. And, John, if you want to introduce everybody and talk a little bit more about the project.
No, that's fantastic. Thank you, councilor. So Seth Glasser, City Engineer and Manager of North Plaza, Andrew Hawthorne, they did all the Little Dry Creek Drainage Way Project, Allison Rice from Adams County, and Dave Lovato, one of our consultants with Martin Martin Engineering, and Gerald Carlson with Norris Design. And again, this is a very small piece of the larger team that worked for the better part of twelve years to make this project a reality. And again, we're blessed. This is so amazing. And I think our favorite part was the grand opening night, just to see thousands of people out there, the fireworks, and just giving back to the community in an area that has been underserved and really create that back again. So we're just thrilled to be part of that.
No, that's great. And I don't have the awards in front of me, so that's the best part. So again, congratulations. This is well-deserved recognition for many, many years of hard work with many great partners that we are happy to have, be a team with. I just want to say congratulations.
I can. Okay. One, two, three, smile. One, two, three, smile. Thank you.
Awesome. Congratulations.
And again, thanks to everybody who came out tonight. We appreciate that. And congratulations to the staff on both project awards, here and the wellness program as well. The next item up on the agenda is the item for Citizen Communications. This is a period of time that we turn the microphone to you for a period of, each person has up to five minutes. You can speak on any subject you want unless there is a scheduled public hearing, which we have none tonight, so the floor is wide open. When your time comes up, once you've identified yourself, the light will turn green at the podium. You have up to five minutes. When you're down to four, a little yellow light will come on, and when your time is expired, a little red light comes on. So at this time, I have Karen Hardy. Ms. Hardy, if you would, please.
So, good evening, Mayor and City Councilors. My name is Karen Hardy. I live at fifty-one thirty-three West Seventy-third Avenue in Westminster, and I'm also Vice Chair of the Historic Landmark Board. And I'm here tonight to speak in support of public hearing item J, which is the Schoenberg Farm Pump House and Wood Silo Restoration. And I'd like to thank the mayor and city councilors for your ongoing financial support of the preservation and rehabilitation of this complex and your continued efforts to seek adaptive reuse of this historic property. The Schoenberg Farm is a visible reminder of part of Westminster's history, specifically our agricultural and philanthropic heritage. I encourage the city to continue pursuing state historical fund grants to provide seventy-five percent of future preservation costs in support of efforts for our city-owned landmarks. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next person I have up is Curtis Reuter.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilors. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. I'm here to speak this evening about an article I saw in a recent newspaper entitled "Broomfield Invites Local Governments to Join Effort for Stronger State-Local Oil and Gas Regulations." Apparently, the mayor of Broomfield, Randy Arons, has been circulating an area, a letter to area municipalities with several statements in it. It's hard to tell from exactly the news article what the exact content is, but a couple of the excerpts say, "Stronger statewide protections are needed to assure that new wells and pipelines are not located near where people live, work, and play. And we, as locally elected officials, also need greater local control over oil and gas so that we can ensure, just as we do with all other land uses in our communities, that any development meets public health, safety, and welfare standards and is compatible with surrounding land uses." Arons said on Wednesday afternoon, and I think this was Wednesday, October the fourth, that representatives of the area town board and Westminster City Council have already said that they support the initial draft letter. I'm here to encourage you not to sign on to that letter. I forgot to introduce myself, I guess, Mayor, didn't I? I'm Curtis Reuter. I work for a local oil and gas company. I do not work for one of the companies that's involved in any of the controversial development around here, so I speak as someone, well, I'm speaking as a private citizen, not on behalf of my own company, but I want you guys to understand where I'm coming from. And so I wanted to talk for a minute or two about why this is not like any other land use that you regulate. In Colorado and then throughout the United States, we have split estates for mineral rights and surface rights. I know for my house on my suburban cul-de-sac, I have the surface rights. I do not own the mineral rights if someone ultimately wanted to drill there. But these mineral rights are not owned by oil and gas companies. They're typically owned by individuals, citizens who maybe their, you know, parents or grandparents own the mineral rights and they were handed down through time, or people also buy those. They buy and sell them their real property, just like anything else. Those mineral rights are real property that can be bought and sold. They're leased by companies who then want to drill. Now, where this is different from other land uses that you see is that when you tell a developer, no, this is not zoned residential, it's zoned industrial, they still have right to that land, they still have right to that property, they can still develop it. With mineral rights, it's different. It's either you can access it and you can drill, or you can't. There's not another use for mineral rights. And so, you get to a point where when you deny people that access and those mineral owners, those private citizens, the rights to develop their property, you're denying them the right, obviously, the rights to their property, just as if you're condemning their house or practicing eminent domain. In those situations, the government owes people the fair market value of that asset. That becomes a taking. So when you get into mineral rights, if you want to deny people to drill, it becomes a taking, and the government then is, at least in theory, liable for those mineral rights and needs to pay those out. That's why, with all the conflict going on, the moratoriums are consistently struck down by the Colorado Supreme Court and others. You can't deny people the basic access to their property rights. You all are very aware of how divisive an issue this has been in Thornton and Broomfield and other places, how many hundreds of thousands, if not more, the city governments have spent on those issues. I'm here to say, this is not an issue in Westminster. Our geography, where we are, we have few, if any, oil and gas wells within our city limits. I'm guessing there may be a couple of old vertical oil and gas wells up off one hundred and forty-fourth. I don't know that for sure, but I speculate there may be. But no one's looking to drill in Westminster. And because of the complexity of this issue, because it's not really something that's affecting us, I urge you to simply stay out of this issue and not get involved in it, not have it become a, something that becomes a drain on council time, city staff time, and taxpayer resources. We have enough things to work on in Westminster, from the New Downtown to RTD to economic development, to support our tax base so that we can provide good city services. So I urge you not to sign on to that letter, and I appreciate your time and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Just in case anyone missed the sign-up sheet in the back, is anyone else who has an item they'd like to come forward on at this time? Go ahead.
Hello. My name's Brian Head, Adams County, one zero four two one King Circle, Westminster, Colorado eight zero zero three one. I don't have really scripted comments to say tonight. I just wanted to come, with the election coming up, I know the faces up there may change over the next several weeks, but I wanted to take an opportunity to just come and say thank you to this council. I serve as Chairman of the Board of the Westminster Chamber of Commerce, and this is something that I've put a lot of heart into over the last few years, and a lot of you have as well, and a lot of people that are in this room and outside have as well. And I had the opportunity to kind of reflect after the candidate forums that we hosted here the last few weeks, and really was able to see how far we've come over the last few years, since our inception, when, you know, it was just, it was a small group of people with a dream and an idea of something, to give people, business owners and people in the community, a place where they can belong. A local chamber, a lot of people, I think, underestimate the value of that, and they don't understand what it means to the business community and to the residents of a city to have an organization that really champions where we're from. And I had a couple of conversations recently with some of our members. One of them just looked at me with tears in her eyes and just said, you know, my business is doing great now, but we wouldn't be here if it wasn't for the Westminster Chamber of Commerce. I had another one, this was a while back, but had to move out of state, and this is somebody who had a different background than I have, and had moved all over the world, really. And before she left, she said, you know, I hate to leave Westminster because this is the first place I really feel like I belong. You know, and my business was valued here, and my voice was heard here, and the chamber contributed to that. And I want to thank each one of you individually for your contributions to make that happen. I know some of the faces up here will change, but I won't forget the ones that are up here now, because it really means such so much to me and so much to the business community. We have over three hundred members. We had the state of the city that the mayor spoke at recently, where we had a room full of community influencers and leaders assembled in one place, a packed house, sold out. We have our Taste of Westminster coming up. We have over thirty-five vendors, which is double what we had just a year ago. So many things that are so exciting going on with the business community and championing that. And I want to just thank you for your foresight, your vision, your support, just both by votes, you know, funding, and just the emails and the phone calls and the encouragement that I see when I see you around town, coming to our events. And then finally, I want to close with Mayor Protem Garcia. This is really his last public meeting, and so I want to take a second to thank a dear friend of the chamber. So, one of the things that makes leaders great, I think, is when they can go to people that they may not have everything in common with, and find common ground, and make, find consensus, and build trust and build relationships that matter. And very early on, I didn't know what I was getting into when I joined the Board of this Chamber or the Government Affairs Committee, and somebody introduced me to Salbardo. And we formed a relationship, and that started to grow, and he made introductions. He sat down and said, you need to sit down with the mayor. He said, need to sit down with all of you, you know, Don Tripp, John Hall, Mac, when he was here, and really built meaningful relationships. And somebody who took the time to come to these things, I know this isn't a full-time job, he has other things, he's got, you know, kids to keep up with and that kind of thing. So, foresight, and I really just want to say thank you on behalf of myself, as a friend, and on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce and all the businesses that we represent. Thank you all for all that you've contributed.
Anyone else who have any comments? I see none, we'll move on. In our acting capacity, Ms. Opie?
Yes, sir, I have nothing to report.
Nothing to report?
Thank you.
Well, just in case somebody is looking for him, Don Tripp is sitting at the ICMA Conference in San Antonio, having to sit through days and days of learning about city management. I think that's what's going on down there. Yeah? Next item on is City Council comments. Mr. Garcia, you're up first.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, before I get started, I want to just acknowledge Cub Scout Pack nine six nine with my friend Hank Sand and his group who's over here. If you all want to stand up and wave, we appreciate you being here, and thank you very much. Like, tonight's my last regular meeting of the city council. I know that we have one on November thirteenth, but that's more a abbreviated meetings, transition of power. That's really about looking forward to the future, so tonight- So tonight, I'm going to take a little bit of time to do some reflection on the time that I was able to spend here on council. And for those of you who follow me on Facebook, you already got a sneak peek of this because I posted it earlier, but I'm gonna go ahead and read a part of this anyway. There's, you know, this has been an incredible honor and privilege to serve on the Westminster City Council. I cannot think of a greater responsibility that's been given to me, and I have worked as hard as I can to uphold, uphold that faith and trust that people had in me. And there are so many people that I have to say thank you to, and, you know, I have to start with my amazing wife, Abby Fitch, who is joining us this evening, if you want to wave, I just embarrassed her. You know, the fact is, it takes a lot of time. This job takes a lot of time to, it's just a lot of time away from your family, and there is absolutely no way that I would have been able to do this job, to do this, if it wasn't for Abby's willingness to take on so much more responsibilities with our family, and to be supportive and put up with me when I came home with those late nights and I was super wound up, at 1:00 in the morning, at 12:00 at night, and tried to talk to her about the meetings. And she just put up with it. And she, it's her support that allowed me to run for council, allowed me to be on council, allowed me to pursue this journey that I've been on of being a Westminster City Councilor. I just want to say thank you. And my son Jacob, who's here, if you want to wave, he's in middle school, so I'm really embarrassing him. You know, he and my daughter Claire, who's at college, those are my inspirations, that's why I wanted to do this. That's why I spent so much time in trying to make this, you know, trying to keep this Westminster a great place, trying to make this an even better city, is because of them. And this is their hometown, and I just want to make sure that they're proud of where they're from, and they have a thriving community that they can call home. So I just want to say thank you. And I've had an incredible, incredible pleasure of working with some amazing people on city council. I mean, we don't always agree on every issue. I mean, believe me, there's plenty of times that we disagree, but you know what? Everybody up here is here because they care about the city of Westminster. They want to sacrifice their time for a long time because he cares about Westminster. He's devoted his, a majority of his professional life to this city because he cares about Westminster and wants to make it a better place, and I appreciate that and applaud that so much. And my colleague, Emma Pinter, who joined me in 2013, and has been, we've been through numerous, numerous battles together on numerous issues, and she's always been an ally and supporter, and I could not have thought of a better person to work with as we try to do so many things on the city councils. I just want to say thank you. My friend Bruce Baker, we definitely don't agree on every issue, but the fact is, Bruce Baker tells you where he's coming from, you know what he believes in, he's genuine in his beliefs. Bruce Baker and I, I think we have a pretty good relationship and talk quite frequently, and believe me, we come from very opposite ends of viewing issues, but the fact is, I respect his genuineness and I respect his passion and his beliefs, and I want to thank him for always trying to reach out to me and include me in his thought process. So I want to say thank you. My friend Shannon Byrd, Go Buffs, my fellow Buff, and, you know, Shannon's an amazing and passionate leader for the city of Westminster, has brought in so many innovative ideas from our apprenticeship programs to so many different areas that she's passionate about and has fought for and has made this a better city because she has been on the city council, and it's really just been a pleasure to work with her. And my friend Maria DeCamber, whose passion and energy is just infectious to everybody up here. I mean, Maria is an amazing, amazing spokesperson for the city of Westminster, she's an amazing leader for the city of Westminster, she is an effective leader for the city of Westminster. And quite frankly, I can, I've learned so much from watching Maria and watching how she leads the city of Westminster, and I'm so grateful for that. And my friend Anita Sights, you know, the fact is, you know, I didn't know Anita when, I didn't know, we met in November, end of November 2013, we, early December of 2013, we had a meeting at Zoe's Coffee Shop, and it was fine, it was pretty unremarkable meeting. I don't think you, I don't think you were that impressed with me. You know, there was nothing in that meeting when I left there that was showing me that I was meeting somebody who ultimately would become one of my best friends. That's the reality. I cannot think of anybody who's been more loyal, who is a better friend. She has taught me so much about just dedication, about integrity, about being a leader. She's been my friend, she's been my confidante. For those on staff who know me, she's actually had to calm me down more times than I can remember. She's been my voice of reason more times than I can remember, and the fact that I can call her and that I could call her family, that I can call her husband Matt, some of my very best friends, is one of the best things I take away from this job. So it, I just want to say thank you. You know, the best legacy I can leave Westminster is the amazing staff that we have here. Don Tripp is, that is the best legacy I leave, is knowing that this city is in incredibly capable hands of Don Tripp, and that he has surrounded himself with an amazing, amazing team, with Jody Andrews and Barbara Opie, and I wish I could list every staff member because we have such, such a talented group of people who work here at the city of Westminster. David Frankel and his team, who do an amazing job of protecting this city, and Judge Tiffany Saris, who in her short time here has brought innovations to that courthouse that just blow my mind. And knowing that she is in charge of administering justice for the city of Westminster makes me so incredibly proud. You know, I had no idea the vast magnitude of what goes into work at city government. I didn't. But what I found out is that we have some of the most passionate, bright, innovative people that are working here at the city of Westminster. And is it important who sits up here on the dais every other Monday night? Sure. What's really important is who we have in those offices upstairs, who we have in those offices at Public Works, who we have in those offices at Public Safety, and the fact is, we have some amazing people in those offices. And I know that this city is so incredibly well-run, and as a resident, I could not be more proud of the people who work for the city of Westminster, and I just want to say thank you. It was a pleasure to get to work with you, to get to know you, to learn more about your jobs, and I leave here with the utmost confidence in the future of the city of Westminster because of our amazing employees that we have here. You know, somebody asked me, "What's the part of this job you're going to miss the most?" And I think it's going to be, it's going to be interacting with our community members. It's going to be going to all the different organizations, the different groups, and hearing their passion, how much they care about Westminster, whether it's the Friends of the Westminster Library Group, whether it's Brian Head and Juliette from the Westminster Chamber, who are such vigorous advocates for small businesses. We have so many people in this community who dedicate their time, who dedicate their energy, because they want to make Westminster a better place. And it is getting to interact with them, getting to do my small part in helping them, is the part that I'm going to miss the most because we have such a wonderful residents here in Westminster, and I just thank them so much for the time that they give to make Westminster a better place. And I could go on and on, but let me just end with this, you know, as the first Latino that was elected to the Westminster City Council, as the first Latino mayor pro tem, I really felt that I had a responsibility, a responsibility to fight for our community. When I was door knocking in the summer of 2013, I went to a house, it was a Latino, it was a Latino woman who came, I asked her, "What's your favorite city service? What do you like about the city of Westminster? What do you utilize?" She goes, "I don't go to anything because they don't want me here." And so I don't think that's true. I don't think that's true. She's like, "No, I don't feel like I'm really wanted here, we don't go to anything." You know what, last, this summer, at that Westminster Latino Festival, she was there with all her entire kids, she was there with her family. I saw her, she said, "You know what? I know the city wants me here." And I am so proud to leave there, knowing that we have opened this and making it an inclusive community, and that's something that I am very grateful for. There's something special about municipal government, there really is. This is different than federal governments, different than state government. These are just people from your community who are sitting up here trying to do a good job. You can't pick up the phone and call your United States Senators, you can't pick up the phone and call the President, you can pick up the phone and call any one of us up here, and we're going to answer the phone, we're going to answer our cell phones, and we're going to talk to you. We are there, we're the most available, and that means we're the most able to interact with people and able to effectuate change, able to help people. That is why this job is so important, that is why municipal government is so special, and it has truly, truly been my honor to be able to serve on the city council. Thank you.
Counsel, any other comments? Don't have to. Mr. Camber?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think Alberto, I think that's kind of unfair that you get to go first, because I think now it's, how do we follow that? I think tonight it's bittersweet, right? Because as Brian and Alberto have mentioned, when we come back here in a couple of weeks, it's going to be a different leadership, new leadership, which can be very exciting, at the same time, it can be scary. But it's a new time. And for me, and I know for many of my colleagues here, it's very bittersweet because we definitely know Alberto won't be coming back. And I just want to take the opportunity to thank you. Thank you first for, as a Latina, for opening doors for Latinos, because now many kids and many people, because of your leadership, can see themselves in here. And because of that, and I know we've seen it, we've seen it from the community, we've seen it from having more diverse voices coming here to council. I'll never forget the first time we had Alma. She came, spoke in Spanish, and that day, I know, we looked at each other and we said, "Okay, we are representing all of our residents now," because they feel, regardless of their background, that they can actually come to our council and speak up and say what they want and ask, and also be involved and included in the community. So thank you, thank you for opening doors for many more people. And I think tonight it's very, it's kind of a good closing that we get to vote on the Affordable Housing Task Force and on the multilingual access study, because I know those are things that you have been a strong champion. I think one thing that we can all agree and value about Alberto's leadership, it's, he has been the kind of leader that if he has a meeting with you behind closed doors and tells you that he will bring the issue, that he will support it, he will do it. Every time he said, "We're going to work on this," or "We're going to," there was never a community meeting that he had that was not translated here to council. And I think that's a leadership that we will cherish and that we will continue to honor and follow your steps. And I'll also take the chance to thank, you know, Alberto's family. You know, it's, when you're on council, it's kind of hard not to become attached, right, to the family, and Abby and Jacob are simply amazing. And I know we'll continue to see you very, very often. So, thank you, and I'll stop before I think we'll start crying, you're making us all very teary-eyed. And just thank everybody for being here today. And your kids left, Anita. Well, I wanted to say hi to Katie and Anita and Phoebe. Anyways, well, thank you all very much for being here tonight, and Alberto, you'll be very much missed, but I know you'll stay very close.
I would also like to, I mean, acknowledge really Counselor Garcia and all the things he has added to this really council. I think one of the hardest things we have to do as members of this council is to try to bring the values we have to life. That's very difficult because we're human beings, and human beings are littered with flaws, and probably our biggest flaws is our fears of things we don't know about. And we don't know what we don't know. But Alberto has taken that fear and overcome it, and tried to bring his values to life, but not only bring his values to life, but really, I mean, to communicate and persuade others that don't see the same course of action as valuable that he does. And that is a most admirable trait, and it's not inherited, it is, comes from really within the person. It's something that they have to find the courage to rise to meet. I would like to thank him for what he has given to this city.
Thank you, Alberto. Miss Sights?
So I'd like to note, for the record, where I stand with my family. They stayed for Alberto's comments, but then left before my comments. I think that kind of says the impact that Alberto has had on the Sights' family, household. Maybe they were tired. So unlike Alberto, I remember my first impression of him, and I was impressed. I actually had never met Alberto Garcia, it was about this time in 2013, I received a mail piece for his election in the mail, and I looked at it and read through it, did some research on his website, and thought, "Oh, my goodness, how lucky are we that we're going to get this, someone with this caliber who wants to serve on city council." At that point, I was just an MBA student about to finish up. I loved living in the city, but I didn't see myself probably getting into city government. I wouldn't know a vacancy would occur that would allow me an opportunity to get into this absolutely bizarre, rewarding role of a city counselor. Then I got to meet Alberto Garcia in person, and I think as soon as you meet Alberto, he is that mix of warm, probing, and you can tell you're being scrutinized a little bit, too. Particularly if you're applying for a vacancy on a city council. So I am not surprised to hear I did not impress him. But I didn't know the half of it. I didn't know how impressive this individual actually was. He's an extraordinary representative for this city, and it isn't actually all of those technical skills that I was so impressed with on that piece of paper. It is his commitment to being an ambassador, to being a liaison between the community and city hall. He will take his time to meet with any individual that has a concern, an issue, that is angry, that is excited, and sit and listen, and then relay it back to the rest of us, and on occasion, advocate, and on occasion, advocate fiercely. So Alberto has been tremendous in those duties, and it's something that I'm going to try to push myself on in his absence. I think I've let him do a little bit of the heavy lifting, and I need to shore it up, and I will step up to that. He's absolutely community-driven, he's a passionate advocate for issues that he cares about, but he's willing and able to build genuine friendships with those who he has disagreed with. Often, that has been me. Alberto's been an inspirational colleague, a mentor, and a friend. I feel this agenda tonight really showcases a lot of the victories that we have had together as a council. On this agenda tonight, we have affordable housing, we have inclusivity, expanded translation services for city services, success at our downtown, we have a strong commitment to energy efficiency. Really, peppered throughout this agenda are Alberto's fingerprints and the work that we've done together as a unit, as a team here in Westminster. I'm grieving the loss of that team member, but I know that we can continue to work together, and I'm sure this is, this is not the last we will hear from Alberto. I'm sure I will still get angry phone calls. Alberto made a comment earlier that it is a privilege and an honor to serve, and I agree with that completely, but I have been incredibly fortunate to have had the opportunity to act in this role with someone like him. His leadership will sorely be missed. He is always the Harry Potter to my Hermione, and I guess that makes Emma Ron. So, the team will change, but the work will go on.
Ms. Byrd?
So, I don't know the reference either, but...
We haven't read Harry Potter in my house, but...
So this is about Alberto. I just want to bring it back to Mayor Pro Tem Garcia. So we are all piling on, I know people who come to our meetings, hear us do this frequently, but I need to echo this because I, more than anything, that I show that I feel the same. Alberto has been so much fun to serve with. He can take the driest meeting and, I don't know, offer an expression or perhaps an emoji on the cellphone, and I am beside myself with laughter. I have enjoyed serving with him so much, I can't even say. He's smart, he's warm, and much to the dismay of many, I have called Alberto affectionately lovely. Alberto has been, has been a really wonderful colleague, I've learned from him, I've seen his commitment and his passion for the people and the causes that he cares about, and as several of my colleagues have already mentioned, he is a passionate advocate and fearless, and I admire that. I think that's something that all of us can learn from, that, you know, we have a special responsibility in this role when we're elected, to fight for the things that we care about and for the people that, who we've committed to. We've committed to advance many different good things for our citizens, and we have a special obligation to carry through with that. And I feel that Alberto, Mayor Pro Tem Garcia, has done a tremendous job at that, and really been a leader and somebody for many of us to learn. been a leader and somebody for many of us to learn from and to follow. I'm going to miss him so much. He sits to the left of me during council dinner, and I get to see him nearly across the table in our boardroom. And his seat, I'm just, I'm already sad, knowing that he's not going to be there. I've said this to him already like 10 times tonight. So Mayor Protem Garcia, thank you so much for your service, for all of your support, for your leadership, and I'm going to miss you greatly, and at least you're on the Adams County side now, so I'll know where to find you.
Yeah, I'm still stuck on Ron. I'm sorry. Is it because I'm a redhead? Yeah, okay. It's because I'm a ginger. All right. Well, you know, I think that's actually a decently fitting analogy. When people ask, "What's your relationship like with Alberto?", I met him as we were both running for office, and we went through countless forums and encounters together, and then had the opportunity to serve together. And there was an issue that we both were working on in the 2013 election, and then we won, which was a surprise to both of us, and we're very excited about that. And then we're like, "Well, what do we do to get this issue accomplished?". And we were on the phone, we couldn't figure it out. It was like day five, and he's like, "Well, I'll write a bill." And I'm like, "That sounds great." So we wrote a bill. Do you remember this? And we brought it in to City Hall, and staff just sort of stared at us and couldn't figure out what the heck we were doing. And we have learned so many things on this journey, and I think one of the things that we have learned most of all is what an impeccable team of experts who are much better at writing things than we are and know much more about them than we do. And we don't write the packets and the proposals. We are able to read and reference and are incredibly grateful for the diligent work of so many that surround us, like those who won awards tonight. And I just feel like that moment sort of highlights how we kicked off our many years of working together. And it really is like going to school with someone and knowing them and seeing how they are in good times and hard times. And Alberto has certainly been through all of the above. And thank you for your many years of service. And Abby and family, I got to see your family a little bit on Saturday night, and said to Abby, I was like, "Do you guys need anything? Are you doing okay?". Because I don't know that we'll be the same at all without the Garcia-Fitch family as part here at City Hall. And I hope that, you know, either I'll be out there in the community with you, or you'll be calling me to complain. So, thank you so much for your many years of service.
If I didn't know better, I would think Alberto wasn't planning on showing up for the next council meeting. But we'll remind you, you do still have a fiduciary responsibility for one more meeting. So November 13th, we may be going through this whole thing again, so...
That one's about looking forward.
That one? No. Okay.
Is there another speech?
No. Different type.
Abby, control him, will you please? Yeah, I know. So we will have more of these comments in about four weeks as things go along, so please stand by. Let me move on, try to get us back on the agenda and see if we can get you out of here before midnight. The next item up is the consent agenda, as a group of routine matters to be acted on with a single motion and vote. At this time, we have already reviewed the items on the consent agenda with council. We've had no request for any item to be removed. So this time, I'll entertain a motion for the consent agenda. Mr. Baker?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that the city council adopt the consent agenda, items 8A through 8G.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. And all those in favor, please vote with your buttons, please. Motion carries on a 7-0 vote. Next item on the agenda will be item 9A. And Ms. Bird?
Yes, I move that the city council appoint Candace Klein as Associate Municipal Court Judge.
Do you have a second for the motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Ms. Pinter, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to put into the record some of the amazing feedback we've gotten on the court, and then Judge Saris was here, oh, you're still on the way back, and her feedback on what a wonderful job and this judge has been doing, and what a great addition she'll be to our Westminster Municipal Court. And I'm so very lucky that we have such an amazing candidate to join us here.
Any other comments from council? Seeing none, all those in favor, please use your lights. Or opposed to either one. Motion is carried on a 7-0 vote. Next item we'll move to is item 10A. This is a public, Councilor's Bill number 41 on first reading of updating the city's building and fire codes. Ms. Sykes?
Mr. Mayor, I move to pass Counselor Bill's, Counselor's Bill number 41 on first reading to update the city's building and fire codes by adopting the 2015 additions of the international codes with amendments in the area of swimming pools and spas, distilleries, and general location-specific amendments, for example, local soil conditions, local weather factors, and restrictions on the installation of solid fuel burning devices.
Ms. Pinter?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this item?
Mr. Mayor?
Seeing none, this is a roll call.
Oh, no. Yeah.
This is a roll call vote.
No, I had a comment.
You do have, go ahead.
And so do I.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I just want to take a minute and thank all the staff. We mentioned this in the pre-meeting, but also the members of the community who came forward and spent many hours with lovely cold sandwiches, working through the fine details, and asked really great detailed questions on this set of building codes and their expertise in the industries covered here. And this was a great collaboration between the proposals from staff, the feedback from experts who live in our own community, and now we have something really excellent to vote on as a body.
Ms. Sykes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say that this is one step further in affirming our commitment to energy efficiency in Westminster. Earlier this year, we amended our strategic plan to put energy efficiency and natural resource conversation, conservation rather, as one of our high priorities. And this is one of the ways that municipal governments interface in a way that's really meaningful in this area. So I want to thank staff for the research they did and their, and their work on this. I'm really happy that Westminster is a leader in this area.
Mr. Garcia?
Sure, I just want to echo the comments that were made previously. I want to think Counselor Pinter served as the council liaison to this board and was part of the initial formulation of the draft. And then I want to thank our staff, I want to thank Mr. Andrews. I know when it came back to council, there were some questions about the energy efficiency requirements. The staff did incredibly diligent research in determining what would be the best practice and how we could, how could be the best practice and be in sync with our strategic plan. And I think we've hit that goal. And I just want to say, say thank you to the citizens who were part of that committee and to our staff who took that draft and made it even better to be in conformity with the goals of our strategic plan. So, thank you.
Any other comments from council? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Atchison.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
DeCambre.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Pinter.
Yes.
Sykes.
Yes.
Motion is carried on a 7-0 vote. Next item is 10B. This is Councilor's Bill number 42. And ladies and gentlemen, before I open this one up, I will be abstaining on this item because I received a contribution from a member of the team that's working on this for my campaign, so I will be abstaining. Ms. Bird, if you would, please.
Yes, I move to pass Counselor's Bill number 42 on first reading, authorizing the city manager to execute the finance agreement with Eaton Street Affordable Housing LLC and the Westminster Economic Development Authority in substantially the same form as presented for the development of Lot 1 of Block C2.
Ms. Pinter?
A second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion by council? Ms. Sykes?
We will let you go home soon, I promise. I just wanted to highlight for everyone what this block actually is. This will be a wrap on, so a building that actually wraps around our parking structure. And a comment that I constantly am getting is, "Oh, my goodness, that parking structure is so unattractive." It was designed intentionally so because it will be completely shielded by an absolutely beautiful apartment. What I'm even more excited about, it's not just aesthetically pleasing, it's not just bringing density to the retail shops that'll be there, but it's affordable housing, really serving a broad spectrum of affordable housing needs in our community. This way, people can live and work in our downtown. So, thank you so much for all of the effort. This has been a lot of effort, but it is a huge success.
Ms. Bird?
So, I'm very excited about this project. I remember when I first ran for council, knocking on doors and talking to literally thousands of Westminster residents, one of the biggest concerns voiced to me was the lack of affordable housing. And this was a concern that was echoed by seniors, by parents of kids, I guess they're not kids, but say, young adults coming out of college, looking for their first opportunity to move out on their own or even buy a place to live. This, this is a concern that has struck every single demographic and every age group, and it's all for different reasons. And now, once this project is complete, we will have 118 more families who will now have a place that they can afford to live in. That's a tremendous achievement, I think, and I congratulate city staff. I thank you so much for your diligence in pursuing this and making this happen. This is being directly responsive to a serious issue being faced by so many of our citizens. And to know that we are on the path to making, making a real solution for so many people is great. Anyway, you've made my time on council already worth it, so thank you.
Any other comments, council? Seeing no other comments, this is again a roll call vote.
Baker.
No.
Bird.
Yes.
DeCambre.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Pinter.
Yes.
Sykes.
Yes.
Atchison.
Abstain. Motion carries on a 5-1 vote, five in favor, one against, and one abstention. Next item on the agenda will be item 10C. This is Resolution number 25. Mr. Garcia?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we pass Resolution number 25, re-First Amendment to the Westminster Economic Development Authority, City of Westminster Intergovernmental Cooperation Agreement, regarding the reimbursement of public improvement and maintenance expenses in the South Sheridan Urban Renewal Area.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Ms. DeCambre?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion by council? Seeing none, again, this is a roll call vote. Ms. Parker?
Bird. Yes.
DeCambre.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Pinter.
Yes.
Sykes.
Yes.
Atchison.
Yes.
Baker.
No.
Motion carries on a 6-1 vote. Next item on the agenda is item 10D. This is Resolution number 26. And I'll be back there in just a second. All right, Ms. Sykes?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution number 26, approving an intergovernmental agreement for evaluation and funding of a Rocky Mountain Greenway Trail Soil Sampling and Analysis Plan.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion by council? Seeing none, this is also a roll call vote. Ms. Parker?
DeCambre.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Pinter.
Yes.
Sykes.
Yes.
Atchison.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Motion passes on a 7-0 vote. Next item on the agenda will be item Resolution number 27, item 10E. Ms. DeCambre?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to adopt Resolution number 27, to formally receive the Affordable and Workforce Housing Strategic Plan as a guide for developing housing policies for the City of Westminster.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion by council? Seeing none, this will also be a roll call vote. Ms. Parker?
Garcia.
Yes.
Pinter.
Yes.
Sykes.
Yes.
Atchison.
Yes.
Baker.
No.
Bird.
Yes.
DeCambre.
Yes.
Yes. Garcia.
Yes.
Pinter.
Yes.
Sykes.
Yes.
Atchison.
Yes. Abstain. Motion carries on a 6-1 vote. Next item on the agenda would be item 10F1, Resolution number 25. Ms. Sykes?
Isn't it 28?
Yeah.
Okay.
Item 10F.
Okay. I move to adopt Resolution number 28, authorizing the transfer of $97,300 from the 2017 General Fund contingency account into the Communications and Outreach Division operating budget in the city manager's office.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on item 10F1? Ms. Parker, this is a roll call vote as well.
Pinter.
Yes.
Sykes.
Yes.
Atchison.
Yes.
Baker.
No.
Bird.
Yes.
DeCambre.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Pinter.
Yes.
Sykes.
Yes.
Atchison.
Yes.
Baker.
No.
Motion carries on a 6-1 vote. Next item up is item 10G. This is authorization on the First Amendment of, on IGA. Ms. Bird, if you would, please.
I move to authorize the mayor to execute the First Amendment to the intergovernmental agreement between the City of North Glenn, Ralston House, the Cities of Westminster, Thornton, Federal Heights, Brighton, Commerce City, and Aurora, the City and County of Broomfield, and the County of Adams regarding construction and construction management of the North Glenn-Ralston House.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, you have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion by council? Seeing none, again, this will be a vote with your buttons, please. Motion carries on a 7-0 vote. Next item up is item 10H. Ms. DeCambre?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to ratify the expenditure of $36,833 to the previously city council-approved contract with Gold Star Concrete Inc. for the repair of concrete at the Westminster Sports Center, increasing the total contract approval amount to $576,921.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion by council? Seeing none, ladies and gentlemen, this is also a vote with your light, please. Motion is carried on a 7-0 vote. Next item up is item 10I. Mr. Garcia? I'm sorry. I think that was your...
I did have. Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve a proposed sole-source contract with Mueller Engineering for the Little Dry Creek Drainage and Flood Control Project and Irving Street Connection to Creekside Drive. Pardon me. Let me read it correctly. I left my sheet. Mr. Mayor, I move based on the recommendation of the city manager that the city council finds that the public interest will be best served by entering into a sole-source contract with Mueller Engineering for design and construction inspection services with the Little Dry Creek Drainage and Flood Control Project and the Irving Street Connection to Creekside Drive Project in the amount of $127,834, and authorize a contingency in the amount of $6,500 for a total authorized expenditure with this firm not to exceed $134,334.
Ms. Sykes?
Second.
Okay, you have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion by council? Seeing none, this is a vote with your lights, please. This motion carries on a 7-0 vote. Next item up is item 10J. Ms. Sykes?
I move that we, based on the recommendation of the city manager, that city council finds the public interest will be best served by a negotiated sole-source contract with Summit Construction Specialties, Inc. in an amount of $292,143. Construction Specialties, Inc., in an amount of $292,143, and authorize a contingency in the amount of $16,606 for a total authorized expenditure with this firm not to exceed
Ms. Byrd?
Second.
Do you have a motion and a second? Is there any discussion by council? Ms. Sykes?
I just wanted to quickly, I don't know if she's left, but thank Karen Hardy for coming today and giving the recommendation to approve this. I also wanted to thank her for her time on the Historic Landmark Board. And honestly, I am very excited to vote yes for this. I think this is a huge asset for Westminster and I look forward to seeing what John Hall and his team will turn it into.
Any other comments from council? Seeing none, ladies and gentlemen, this is also a vote with your lights. And this motion carries on a 7-0 vote. Next item on the agenda will be item 11A. As previously approved, Ms. Byrd will be abstaining from voting on this item. Mr. Frankel, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, on item 10C, if I could ask that the motion be made in the form that is on the sheet submitted to council by the clerk. I believe the title was inadvertently read instead of the form of the motion on the sheet for 10C.
On 10C?
Correct.
I don't recall who made them.
No, I did. I'm a short timer, so I had my.
So we'll go back to item 10C and ask, who was the second? Do you recall?
10C was Garcia and DeCamara.
Okay. Mr. Garcia, if you would?
Sure. I'm really showing off for my family tonight. Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution Number 25, authorizing the city manager to execute the First Amendment to the Intergovernmental Cooperation Agreement between the City of Westminster and the Westminster Economic Development Authority in substantially the same form as presented, providing payment to the city from WIDA for reimbursement of costs associated with a redevelopment agreement benefiting the South Sheridan Urban Renewal Area and city incurred costs related to the maintenance of improvements in the URA.
Ms. DeCamera, I presume you will still be the second?
Second, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. All right. This has previously been voted on and was a 6-1 vote, so just for the record, would you please do it again? And the vote on the motion remains the same, it's a 6-1 in favor of the motion. Now, moving on to item 11A, as I previously stated, Ms. Byrd has already been given an opportunity to recuse herself due to a campaign contribution to her current campaign, and that was approved by council at the previous meeting. At this time, I would open up the motion. Ms. Sykes, if you would, please.
Mr. Mayor, I move to pass Counselor's Bill Number 40 on Second Reading, authorizing the city manager to execute and implement an economic development agreement with the vistas at Panorama Point in a form substantially the same as the document presented to council.
And I need a second.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion by council? And that is a roll call vote, if you would. Ms. Parker?
Sykes?
Yes.
Atchison?
Yes.
Baker?
No.
Byrd?
Abstains.
DeCamara?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Pinter?
Yes.
Okay, the motion carries on a 5-1 vote with one abstention and one no vote. All right, ladies and gentlemen, as far as the city council goes, you are done for tonight, but we're not done with business. So we will adjourn as the Westminster City Council, and at this time, I would call the Westminster Economic Development Authority Board of Directors to the board meeting. And this will be, a first item will be to, get this back on the right spot. And Ms. DeCamera, if you would, for the minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that the board approve the minutes of the October 9th, 2017 meeting as presented.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. First item for the board is adoption of Resolution Number 179. Ms. Byrd?
I move to adopt Resolution Number 179, authorizing the executive director to execute the First Amendment to the Intergovernmental Cooperation Agreement between the City of Westminster and the Westminster Economic Development Authority in substantially the same form as presented, providing payment to the city from WIDA for reimbursement of costs associated with a redevelopment agreement benefiting the South Sheridan Urban Renewal Area and city incurred costs related to maintenance of improvements in the URA.
Ms. Pinter?
Second.
Do you have a motion and a second? Any member of the board have any other comments? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote. Ms. Parker, if you would, please.
Atchison?
Yes.
Baker?
No.
Byrd?
Yes.
DeCamara?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Pinter?
Yes.
Sykes?
Yes.
Ladies and gentlemen, motion carries on a 6-1 vote. Next item on the agenda will be item B under three. And again, as I did before, I recuse myself from this item as it is something that I've already received a conflict of interest on. Ms. Pinter, if you would, please.
Yes, I move to adopt Resolution Number 180, authorizing the executive director to execute the finance agreement with the Eaton Street Affordable Housing LLC and the City of Westminster in substantially the same form as presented for the development of Lot 1 of Block C2.
Ms. Sykes?
Second.
Do you have a motion and a second from the board? Is there any further discussion? Ms. Sykes?
Oh, no.
Okay, none?